A teleconference? The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Leverett. And Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, who have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city, it was us to face our most serene mind, justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the amendment and greater happiness of all of those citizens, help us God, amen.
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 Okay, I don't think this is important. Everybody go on mute. I think for the pledge, we're only going to have the person louder that's giving the pledge. Everybody else should be on mute. Somebody's not on mute.
Alderman Lopez? Alderman Lopez, are you on? Okay, I don't see Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lou, would you lead us in the pledge to the flag?
I actually just stepped in.
Oh, sorry. Do you mind?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Thanks, Liz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by WebEx and telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access WebEx, the meeting number access code is 714-331-218. And the password, I'm not sure I really need to read all this, lowercase f, capital H, capital Z, lowercase f, capital W, lowercase w, lowercase z, capital K, 362. To join by phone, please call 408-418-9388. And the meeting number access code is 714-331-218. If for some reason you cannot connect to WebEx, please contact us at 603-821-2049, and they will help you with connectivity. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We are also providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov, and publicly noticed at City Hall, Public Health Department, and the Nashville Telegraph. We've been providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody, if anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law, and if you can hear us. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Alderman O'Brien is present. I can hear the proceedings, and I am alone.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes, I can, I am here. I can hear the, the meeting. I am currently alone, but as I always say, my husband and my two greyhounds are in the house with me. He could make an appearance anytime.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I can hear everyone. I am here alone, following the Governor's orders for distancing. And good to go.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
Yep, I'm here. I'm social distancing so I don't get all of these sick. I can hear you all, and I'm alone.
Alderman Tanza.
I'm present. I am alone, and I can hear everybody.
Alderwoman Lou.
Present, I'm alone.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am here. I can hear everyone, and the only one here with me is my parent.
Alderman Lawes. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here, social distancing, and I can hear everybody.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
I'm here. I'm in the room alone, and practicing social distancing.
Alderman Molshe.
I am here. I am alone, and I am practicing social distancing.
You have 11 in attendance.
I'd like to ask Bruce, or whoever's monitoring this meeting, if the call-ins, like I have Clemmons and Karen that typically call in, and I haven't heard that they wouldn't be here this evening. So is there a way to check on that?
I'll unmute all the call-ins so they can talk.
Hello?
Alderman Karen.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, Alderman Karen.
Okay, all right. I'm here, and I'm alone, and I can hear you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons? Okay, so I'm going to assume that he's not on. I will now, oh. Did we have the Mayor present as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, as customary, I'm going to turn the public hearing on the 2021 budget over to the Chairman of the Budget Committee, Alderman Rick Dowd.
Okay, everyone should be on mute. And I'm going to read the procedure that we'll be following this evening. So first of all, good evening. This is the first online public hearing of the Nashville City Budget, and we hope it runs very smoothly, but it may have minor problems as we try to get through it together. I'm going to outline the process and procedures we're going to follow, and we need to keep as close to these as possible to be successful. I would like to just take a minute to explain how the public hearing will be conducted. I will be opening the public hearing on the budget by recognizing Mayor Jim Donches and Chief Financial Officer for the City, John Griffin, who will be providing a short PowerPoint discussion on Nashville's FY 2021 budget. When they are through, I will then be going through, I'll then be going through the, each budget division by department. Still, problems with my. Okay. All right. And when a member of the public speaks, they must first state their name and address clearly for the record. If I see a member of the public has a question or a comment, I will allow them to ask one question or give one comment for a period of five minutes for that question or comment. I will notify you when you have one minute left, and then when five minutes has expired. Please do not speak until you are recognized by me for your turn, and finish up when I have mentioned the five minutes has expired. I will direct your questions to the responsible division director, and they may defer it to one of their staff. Time limits are imposed because we have no idea how many people might log on to the meeting, and we may have 30 to 50 city employees online, so bandwidth may become an issue. I'm going to ask everyone to turn off their video unless they have a question and want to speak, then turn on your video so I can recognize you. This will help the bandwidth issue some may have. If you have called in, please say your name once so I can recognize you. Again, when I recognize you, please state your name and address for the record. When your five minutes has expired, I will move on to other members of the public who have questions on that department, and so on, until I see no more questions are to be asked on that department. I will then ask if anyone has additional questions for that department, and if so, they had, may have an additional five minutes. If I see no one with a question, I will immediately go to the next department and follow that procedure until that division is complete. I will only accept questions on the department being discussed and no others. At the end of all divisions and departments being covered, I will ask if there are any additional questions on the budget, and we'll recognize any person that has additional questions. The procedures for asking questions is very simple. Each member of the public has five minutes per question or comment, including any statement that is made. Also, no signs will be allowed to be displayed, and if they are, the City IT Department will block their access to this meeting. If you run over the time limit, I will remind you to wrap up your question. And if you continue to speak, you will be reminded one more time. And if you don't follow the procedures, you'll be muted by IT. We want everyone to be heard on the budget, and we have to allow all members of the public to be able to participate, and we cannot let any one individual go outside our normal procedures. If you have general budget questions, you may ask those when the Mayor's office is up for discussion, so they may be answered by the Mayor or Mr. Griffin. When we have concluded the review of all sections on the budget book, I will ask for a motion from Alderman O'Brien to adjourn the public hearing. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Donches and John Griffin, and ask that everyone else, please turn off your video, and everyone is mute except the Mayor and John Griffin, so they can do their presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I didn't hear Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly on roll call, but she is on the meeting. She was on the meeting. I don't know why we didn't hear her. Just wanted to note that for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Lou, unless you have a procedural question, the Aldermen are here just to listen this evening.
I do. Could, would it be a good idea to inform the public how they can indicate that they have a question?
I covered that. They either have to wave their hand, if they, with their, turn their video on so I can see them. They don't do that, I can't see them. And if they're on a phone, they need to say their name, and I'll try, it may be several people saying their name. Whoever I can hear, I will call on, and it will go through until no one else has a question.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I may not have been here when you said that. That's all.
Alderman Kelly, did you have something? No? All right. I still see people on video outside of the Mayor and Mr. Griffin. Please turn off your videos, and until you're called upon, that includes members of the city staff who, when, unless we're asking for you to answer a question, please keep your video off. The bandwidth will be terrible if we don't do that. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Of course, we are following a very unusual procedure tonight for a public hearing that we hold every year. Every year, we hold a public hearing on the budget, take public input. Normally, we're at Nashville South, and this is all done live. But because of the COVID-19 crisis and all that we've experienced together over the last two months, we are doing this remotely. I want to thank the City IT Department and everybody else who's been involved in making this, this possible. Now, what I have here is a set of slides that we're going to go through that gives you an overview of the budget. And then, as the Chairman mentioned, at the end, or when it's appropriate during the public hearing, of course, we can ask general questions about the, you can, we can answer general questions about the budget. Or if you have specific questions about any department, when that department comes up, please ask your question then, and one of the leaders of the department will respond to your question or your comment. So the cover, of course, just tells you that we're, that we're proposing the FY 21. We're discussing FY 21. That's fiscal year 21. We're on a, we're on a fiscal year, which means we run from July 1 to June 30. So the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year 20, ends on June 30, coming up next month. Why don't we go to the first slide, the next slide? And one thing I wanted to make clear before we get into the details is that the budget that we're discussing was proposed before we were hit with the COVID-19 crisis. This was proposed back in early February in order to give the Board of Aldermen time to consider the many aspects of it in a, in a way that they can deliberate about it with, with enough time to be able to discuss and understand everything. But the fact that we now are in COVID-19 may, and I'm saying should, affect the way, change the way that we consider the budget that we need to enact for the next fiscal year. But to reiterate, the budget was proposed before COVID-19. Why don't we go to the next slide? COVID-19 has changed the city, and it has changed the way we will operate, we are operating now, and we will operate city government in the future. The, most of, the, the nonessential employees are now working remotely. We are designing changes for City Hall that will enable people to work remotely, some people a longer term, and will rebuild some of the internal rooms and, and departments of City Hall where there's a lot of public content, contact. All of this will be done in, in a way that protects members of the public and protects employees. So we know that life, not only city government, but life will be different for some time. Of course, it's difficult for all of us. I've had trouble adjusting to some of these changes, like these remote meetings. But we are getting through this together, and, and life will be changed, including the way city government performs its responsibilities in way, in some ways that are probably going to be permanent. But as we look through this coming fiscal year and the fiscal years beyond, we must work smart, we must be disciplined, and we must be unified. And so far, the community has done very, very well with that. And if we do those things, we will come out of this on the other side stronger than we were before. Why don't we go to the next slide? So looking at this budget with COVID-19 in mind, and with the circumstances that we're faced with in mind, here are some of the main objectives. We want to continue to make quality service. You know what those are: police, fire, our schools where we educate over 11,000 children, our public works, picking up the garbage, plowing the streets, and all of the other services that we offer. We want to do those in a safe way that protects, again, members of the public and members of the, the employees that work for the city to contain and prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Certainly, a major taxing, certainly a major objective now, it always was an objective, but now, let's underline this. We need to keep the tax rate increase as low as we possibly can. And some of the economic circumstances we, we're facing, I will discuss those as we get into the slides. But we really need to keep our eye on the tax rate more than ever this year. The next bullet suggests that one of our strategies is the strategic use of one-time state aid. So there is state aid that we are getting that is only going to last for this one year. We will get into some of those details as we see further slides, but we want to make sure that we are smart in the way we use this one-time money. And finally, we want to have an effective COVID-19 cost strategy to maximize use of federal funds. What we mean there is we are using now city money, which is being used to clean buildings, extra overtime, extra IT, that's the software, that's information technology. The Board of Aldermen has already appropriated $200,000 for those purposes. Also, there will be other expenses definitely incurred, rebuilding parts of City Hall, as I, as I mentioned, to change the flow of traffic. Also, overtime in various departments. But working with Justin Cates, the Emergency Management Director, and all of our visions, we want to make sure that we recover as much of these additional costs as we possibly can. We receive, we've received assurances about this from the Governor, from FEMA, that's the federal agency, Emergency Agency. So, but we want to keep that always in mind so that we recover as many local tax dollars as we possibly can. Let's go to the next slide. Now, the budget as proposed includes an increase in healthcare costs of $3 million or 8.6%. This is a major, major increase in a large line item. A $3 million increase in one line item is a difficult financial challenge to handle. But we, this is something we have to do because we have the legal obligation, of course, to provide healthcare to our employees as our 17 union contracts require. Now, the budget expenses for healthcare include what you see on the screen, dental, not only medical, but dental, administrative fees. There's something called stop-loss insurance, wellness activities. The total expenditures that we project for fiscal '21 are around $51 million. About, much of that is paid by the employees, but the city's share, the city's share of the healthcare cost is going up as the first bullet, as we mentioned, $3 million or 8.6%. Now, one problem that we, challenge that we have, of course, is that, that last year, healthcare also went up by a very significant amount. When I say last year, I mean the budget we passed a year ago for the current fiscal year right now. The fiscal year '20, that's the current budget that we're operating with today, increased healthcare costs by 11%. That was 3.3 million. So if you add last year's increase, when I say the increase for fiscal '20 with the increase for fiscal '21, we're dealing with more than a $6 million increase in a single line item. And just so you get a perspective on the impact this is having on us, the city, the taxpayers, the community, $6 million on one line item translates alone to a 3% accident. Now, tax increase, the taxes went up 2.6% last year. The vast majority of that was caused by the $3 million increase in healthcare costs. And taxes will go up again this year, we project, or we want to limit that as much as we possibly can. But again, most of that will be driven by the increase in healthcare costs. Still, on the subject of healthcare, this just shows you the escalating cost for healthcare between fiscal '14 and fiscal '21. This is in a graph form of course, of course. But you can see healthcare costs going up very steadily and significantly every year. Let's go to the next slide. Now, I want you to know that we are working hard to, to use a term they're using around COVID-19, bend the curve on these rising healthcare. We've taken aggressive actions to limit future increases. The most significant change is we've come up with a new plan design, meaning a change in the deductibles and co-pays paid by city employees. This, if applied to all employee groups in the city, will have a very significant cost, very significant effect in holding healthcare costs down. Now, so far, we have asked one group of employees, the so-called unaffiliated or non-union employees, to accept this, and the Board of Aldermen passed it for that group of employees. There are certain reasons why it is actually better for employees and the city. We could get into the details of that, but tonight, let's just touch on, just let's touch on the healthcare. But we need to make sure that this new plan design is incorporated in all collective bargaining agreements as they come to the Board of Aldermen for consideration, so that over a period of several years, we can greatly reduce increases in healthcare costs. The reason that this, now let's look to the second budget. The reason that the new plan design, even though it includes higher deductibles for hospital stays and higher co-pays, may help employees, is that it also reduces the amount they pay on a weekly basis. But another alternative we are offering is we are encouraging enrollment in a high deductible which enables an employee to save money towards future years. And we, we could discuss the details, and we've discussed them with the Board of Aldermen. But tonight, we're focused on the budget. We want your comments. But the high deductible plan is something we are encouraging, and many employees are moving to that. We have the use of Smart Shopper, which is a way that employees can shop for routine medical procedures such as testing and things like that. And if they use the same quality but a less expensive provider, they get, they get a bonus. They share in the savings that the city realizes. We have a healthcare consultant, which is referred to here as WBS. They are educating all employees. They're reaching out to divisions and employees across the city to educate them regarding healthcare costs, regarding the higher deductible plan, and regarding any other, a lot of other information that they can use in terms of managing their own healthcare. We're offering, we're offering now wellness alternatives, Telehealth and Sydney, which is an app, enables you to shop for healthcare. And we are also going to undertake an audit to confirm that all dependents of employees who are being carried by the city on their, on the city's healthcare, we're doing this audit to confirm that all dependents are actually eligible. It could be a divorce or something like. It could be a divorce or something like that, someone might still be on the plan who shouldn't be, so we're, we're going to make sure that all people whose healthcare we are providing are actually eligible for city insurance. Let's go to the next slide. This tells us that the proposed operating budget is $284 million. Now, this is an increase from the current fiscal year of $8.9 million. If you break that increase down, without that one healthcare line that I've discussed, the budget is only up 2.1%, is around the cost of living, all the other line items put together. The one line item of insurance, as we have already discussed, is $3 million. So of the 8.9 million, 3 million of that is the one line item. Were it not for that, the budget would be up 2%. Instead, in total, it's up a little over 3. Now, in terms of the revenues that we are projecting that we will receive in fiscal '21, we are budgeting those conservatively, we don't want to overestimate revenue, especially with the economic climate we are facing. We will continue to be in a low interest rate environment. This means that the city will not be earning a lot of money on the accounts and reserves that we hold. So there will be some, a little bit of income this way, but not a great deal. And we need to think about the potential of a reduction in state aid as a result of the state being hit also with the financial and fiscal impacts of COVID-19. And that could play out in subsequent years, not just in the year to come. We hope that will not happen, but we have to at least keep it in mind as a possibility. Now, I want to go to the fiscal '21 budget challenges. And we'll get into more of the details here as we go on from, from here. As we've mentioned, we have, we face potential reductions in state aid and also in local revenue, automobile registrations and other sources of revenue that the city gets beyond the property tax. As we've already discussed, the second big bullet, cost of city provided healthcare, we're last year in this, a major challenge again. And as a result of these challenges, the proposed budget requires that the school department, the police and fire departments, and the Department of Public Works all live with a 2.2 and 1/4% increase in the budget. And although departments have submitted budgets, budgets higher than this, I have reduced those budgets to 2 and 1/4. Now, just to be clear, we issued, the financial team and I issued guidelines to these departments back in January, saying that no proposed budget should be over 2.2 and 1/4%. However, we have various departments who are independently managed, and they submitted higher budgets, but I reduced them to our target, which I'm very glad that I did now that COVID-19 has hit because we need to be more cautious than ever as a result of COVID-19. All other divisions, other than the major ones that you see, were held to a 2% plus or minus increase. Now, let's go to the next slide. I've touched generally on state aid. I just wanted to show you what this, what the major components of the state aid will be in fiscal '21. First of all, there is a, a portion of the rooms and meals tax that is collected by the state of New Hampshire goes to cities and towns. Nashua's share of that money is 4.5%, excuse me, 4.5 million, I'm sorry, 4.5 million. Now, there's a weekly call with the governor that the mayors across the city have, and I've asked the question, well, obviously, rooms and meals revenues are down for the state, is this number safe? Now, the governor's response has been, yes, it is, because by statute, the amount being distributed to cities and towns is, is a given amount and is not tied to revenue, but that law could be changed. So I think for the short term, we should consider this relatively safe, but be aware that who knows what, what, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. There is a highway block grant of about $1.6 million. Now, we direct this totally into paving. That is funded by gas tax, that probably is safe, but we're not sure. We're not sure if it, the whole thing will come through. And then we go to the most significant aid, and that is state, the state adequacy grant for our schools. Now, that is shown at $35 million. It is a little, it gives a bit of a mission impression because most of this money we collect on our own property tax bills, if you look at the tax bill, it says state, state education, or something like that. Most of it we collect right here in Nashua and never, never send to the state, but it's treated as though it is state aid. But in any event, a portion of this does come as a direct check, so to speak, and you have to ask the question, could that be affected? And we don't, and again, we don't know for sure. We were projecting and thinking maybe not, but we don't know for sure. And finally, you see one-time revenue. Now, this, this is the one-time revenue I heard, I referred to before. This is one-time state aid that we're going to get this year and definitely not again. It's potentially 2.9 million for schools and 1.8 million for the city. Again, one-time revenue, which we, we should be very careful about expending because we should not add this to operating budgets because the money will not be replaced. And in the end, if we, if anyone did that, we would be creating budgets which are not sustainable in the future. Go to the next slide. Now, here is a slide that looks at how will our tax base be affected if COVID-19 creates a weaker economy in the mid or long term? Of course, we're going to do everything we can, and I could discuss some of the steps that the actions that city is taking to try to assist our local businesses with recovery when the economy and as it opens, but the national economists say there could be a recession. We know that many businesses have revenue that's off very significantly, especially in certain industries like hospitality, restaurants, other things like that, airlines. So we don't know, so the question is, will it erode our tax base and cause property in the city to be worth less? Especially commercial property like malls, like strip malls, regional malls, and other office buildings. First bullet says, to be, to be totally transparent and frank with you, we don't know for sure what's going to happen. We don't know if this will reduce commercial values or not. But the, but the second bullet tells you what the impact of lower commercial property values would be. It would mean that you would collect less money from the commercial sector, the malls, the offices, the strip malls, the restaurant. We would collect less money from them, which would push more tax burden onto the homeowner. Now, we haven't seen a huge, huge recession that impacted property values, commercial properties heavily since the 19, early 1990s, but I was there, I was mayor then, and I, in a, in a, in a major recession, commercial values can go down much more quickly than the values of single-family homes at Dominion, for example. So you see, you see the impact on the commercial sector much more quickly, and it's usually, if there is a recession, much more, the decline in values, if it comes, is steeper for commercial properties than for single-family homes. Now, we know that the economy will recover, but we don't know when. That's the, the truth of it, that's the kind of hard reality. We are hoping, we're praying that things will sprint, will, will come back pretty quickly, and within a short time, we'll be back to where we were before. But we don't know that for sure. There could be a recession, Nashua's economy has always been strong. Nashua people work very hard, work well together, so I have confidence and full confidence that we will come back by sticking together, but we don't know how long that might take. Now, let's go to some of the immediate effects that must, we must consider or kick into account when we're thinking about budget. First of all, we know that right now, many Nashuans are hurting, no question about it. We know from the state statistics that more than 8,200 people from Nashua have applied for unemployment benefits since March. This is just since March, middle of March, over 8,000 people. That is a lot of people, that is a higher, now those people may get, may get returned to their jobs as the economy opens, but right now, 8,200 people and more are unemployed. And I say and more because this only includes the people from Nashua who applied for unemployment because they work for New Hampshire Company. It does not include our Nashua residents who work in Massachusetts and have been laid off or furloughed down there. We don't have a firm figure on how many Nashuans have been affected down in Mass, Massachusetts, but we know, do know that 30% of the workforce, of our workforce, 30% of the people who are employed here in the city commute into Massachusetts. So we know that more than, it could be 10, 11, we don't know, but we know that significantly more than 8,000 people are currently unemployed. And the state is saying that the COVID-19 unemployment rate is 15.8%. So these are difficult economic circumstances. Many of our fellow Nashuans are suffering from this. Federal government has provided a supplement to unemployment benefits, which is great, but that's not going to last forever. Now, again, I have full confidence that we can recover, but we can't look at these statistics and all of this information. We can't listen to people who are out of work and how worried they, they and their families are. I certainly have talked to a number without taking into consideration that recovery may not be immediate. You may have to work hard over a period of time to make sure we come back strong. So here, we're going to go to the next, we're going to go to the next slide, please. I guess the slide is frozen, I don't know what's happened.
I'm having trouble with it.
That's, that's Mr. Griffin? I can address it without, so we'll leave that up, and I, I will talk through the next information, and we'll get it up on the screen if we can. I am recommending, and I have discussed this with some of the Alderman, that the one-time state aid that is projected to be spent on various one-time items, that that expenditure be reduced by $1.9 million. And that $1.9 million of this one-time state aid be directed to tax relief. And that would be split between the school side and the city side. I am, I am recommending that under the circumstances that we have outlined, that there can be, there should be no increase, no increases in the proposed operating budget above the 2.25% for schools, police, fire, and EPW. With 8,000 people unemployed with downtown, at least the downtown economy largely shut down for two months. In my opinion, my recommendation is we hold the line on any increases, and we apply an extra $1.9 million to a tax relief. In addition, we need to make sure that the new plan design is included in all collective bargaining agreements. We cannot, we cannot approve, in my opinion, collective bargaining agreements that, that enable health insurance costs to continue to escalate the way they have been. We need these new deductible, the new deductible features and the new co-pays in all the healthcare so that we can bend the curve, so that we can limit increases and possibly, possibly even reduce the overall cost for the city and for our employees in the weekly, weekly contributions that they make. Now, I, as mayor, have instituted a hiring freeze for all non-essential personnel. Again, I want to reiterate that we don't know what's going to be happening over the next few months. We're working our hardest to think it out and to project what could happen, but we want to save as much money as we possibly can right now. So any positions that are currently open and were, and are non-essential, I have ordered a hiring freeze, and for the time being, we will not proceed with those non-essential hirings, and we will save the money to see how things progress through the remainder of the calendar year. Now, I wanted to go to a little more of good news. Again, we are, this is, I know how difficult this period is. I know how difficult COVID-19 has been to deal with. Closing down our lives has been very hard, and, but we are doing something very important together. We are helping to save our community members. We are working to contain the spread of the virus. So far, 10 people in Nashua have died, and that's tragic, but we, I know have, by taking the steps we have taken together, saved a lot of lives. And as we look back on all of this, down the road, we will be proud of what we accomplished in terms of, of attacking this virus with a totally unified action, all of our city employees and our residents working together. But some of the things that have occurred over the last couple of years, I wanted to remind you of because we have a great city, and I'm very proud to be the mayor of it. In 2019, we were the safest city, eighth safest city in the United States. We were awarded best suburb in New Hampshire, suburb of Austin that refers to. In 2019, we are rated the 13th best-run city in the United States. In 2018, we were named one of the safest places to retire in the country. In 2018, we were again named, we were also named one of the best-run cities in the country. I think we were actually eighth that year. In 2018, we were said, it was said that we were the best place for millennials in Hillsborough County. We are the most inclusive place to live in New Hampshire. We have a AAA bond rating, which is something we do not want to put at risk by doing anything unwise financially. We have a AAA bond rating from both S&amp;P Standard and Poor's and Fitch, two rating agencies. When I came into office, we had one AAA, now we have two. And Nashua in 2018 has some of the, has the lowest crime, among the lowest crime among city, among mid-sized cities in the United States. So we have a great city. We're facing a few difficulties, challenges that I know we can come through. We are unified, we're determined and we're going to come out stronger on the other end. But I am urging, no question about it, caution when it comes to considering this year's budget. And that's my conclusion, Mr. Chairman. And of course, available for any question.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If we could put the presentation down. Okay. Now, for those that may have logged on late, uh, this is the first time we're doing the budget presentation in this format, so be patient and everyone will have an opportunity to speak. Uh, you'll have five minutes. I have a timer here. When it, when you get to four minutes, I'll tell you you have one minute left. Want to make a comment? If you want to have a question for the division that we're talking about in the department, you may ask it at that time. Uh, we can't go back until the end. Uh, so and all questions this evening must be solely on the FY twenty twenty-one budget. No other subjects should be brought up. And please stay on mute and no video until I call on you. So we're going to start with the mayor's office. And if you want to be recognized, please go video or state your name and I will call on you. Give your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Yes. Yeah, Lori Oralano?
Yes, forty-one Berkeley Street. Um, just a couple.
Five minutes.
The mayor spoke about essential and non-essential positions and that we were holding off on non-essential positions in the budget. Did I understand correctly that they are in the budget? And is there a list available of the essential and non-essential positions so that a resident can know how many positions are there and essentially what kind of growth that put into the budget?
Mayor, you want to address that?
Yes, let me unmute myself, I'm sorry. So I think I've used not essential and non-essential in two different ways. Certainly in terms of who's working remotely, we have developed a list of non-essential and essential positions that's been done by emergency manager, management and a team of people, Justin, Kate and a team of people. Uh, and what we mean there is that non-essential positions don't have to be on the job, they can work remotely. For example, I certain IT functions can be performed, even though we need those functions, they can be performed remotely. On the other hand, essential and therefore don't encounter any COVID nineteen risk. On the other hand, we have first responders, we have public works, other people who have to be on the job, they cannot work remotely. Those are the essential positions that cannot work remotely. So that's sort of the way those terms, at least I have used them and the city has used them in the context of redesigning city operations to operate safely with COVID nineteen. In terms of the open positions, which, um, open positions, the hiring free. Uh, the, there are some positions open and we really look at those on a case-by-case basis to ask the question, okay, there's an open position. Do we need to fill that right now? I mean, at some point we might need to, but do we need to do it right now? The answer is no, we can defer it. The hiring frees would defer those positions to on down the line. We save some money while we're waiting and uh, while in the delay that results from the hiring free. That does not mean that someday we won't fill those positions, but right now we don't think they're necessary to today to fill the job.
So can can a citizen get a list of what those positions are within the budget that you looked at? I mean, you explained essential and non-essential from, from, um, emergency management, I understand that, but I'm really talking about the budget. Is that something that's available or not? I just don't know.
The ones we're looking at are the open position. So certainly meaning people have resigned or retired, whatever. The, there is, there would be a list of the open positions that currently exist, yes. So that, that is somewhere.
Okay.
You have a couple of minutes left?
Uh, just one other quick one then. Um, healthcare, I was curious. I'm glad you addressed the high deductible plan that you brought forward. It was my understanding, and I might be wrong, that the sign-up period for that might have happened. Um, and if it did, um, can you tell us how was the response for switching into that plan? And what's the cost savings associated with that?
I think that we should turn the question over to your administrative services director, Kim Kleiner, uh, who can give more detail, but in general, a high deductible plan does because it, it encourages, it incentivizes
Yeah.
shopping and the, the determination of, well, if I could get a service for five hundred over here and it's the same quality for two hundred over here, I'll take the two hundred. There's, there are incentives, but I'll let I'll let Director Kleiner, who I assume is on the call, talk about how, the details of how that plays out with respect to individual employees.
Director Kleiner?
Alderman, yes. So, um, right now, the Board of Alderman has approved the high deductible plan and the health design changes for the unaffiliated employees. We are currently in the middle of open enrollment. Um, it was extended until this Friday, the twenty-second. Um, so we're projected to have some data available next week on how many employees have switched over to the high deductible plan. Um, originally, it was thought that we would have this information as of last Friday. We extended open enrollment due to open enrollment now going virtually and some um, hardship that we incurred, um, getting that process up and running. So that data would be available, um, hopefully by the end of next week.
Okay, time is expired, so, um, if we get through other questions, we could come back. And is there anyone else that has a question relative to the, in general, of the city budget or the mayor's office?
I do.
Your name?
Beth Scare, one eleven East Hobart Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, why hasn't the city cut any positions and reduced staffing with this, you know, pandemic hanging over our heads?
Well, if anything, the pandemic has increased the amount of work. We've got people, uh, working seven days a week on many things. First of all, we've got our public health response. That people are working, we are, I could get into the details of what public health is doing, but they are working seven days a week to limit the spread of the virus. Our first responders are, of course, still working and are just as necessary as possible, maybe just as necessary as always. Actually, more necessary as a result of the the, the, the virus and the crisis. Our teachers are teaching remotely. Now that's easier said than done. If you talk, my neighbor across the street, uh, who has a few kids commented, you know, I thought teaching was easy, but given that I'm, I'm now in charge of making sure my kid does the homework, my child does the homework, easier said than done. So our teachers are teaching remotely. And, uh, those are the major employee groups. We have, we have a number of people in the city who are working remotely uh, and doing their normal, normal duties. Uh, certainly there are some employees who will in the short term be at the library, there are some employees who are likely to be furloughed. I think they've been informed of that by now. Uh, so there are certain changes that have been made and of course, we have a hiring freeze that is, uh, been in place, so we are holding certain positions open.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone? If not, is anyone that has an additional question for the mayor's office? Or the general budget? Seeing none, going to move on to the Board of Alderman. That is, uh, on part of general government. Any questions on the Board of Alderman's portion of the budget? I'm seeing none, so I'm going to move on to the legal department. Any questions relative to legal department? Hearing and seeing none, going to move on to the city clerk's office.
Hello?
Yes?
Could we just jump back to the legal department really quick?
Okay, can you say who you are?
Uh, Lori, sorry, I hadn't turned my video on. I'm getting the buttons going. Um, Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street.
Okay.
Does the does the legal department include all of the consultants that are used on various, um, projects or litigation? For example, if they bring in a consultant to address, um, abatements, is that in the legal budget or is that put somewhere else?
Attorney Bolton, you're on mute. There you go.
It is not in the legal department's budget.
Can you tell me where it is?
In the example that, uh, you offered, that would be in what we call the overlay.
Okay, I'm familiar with that. And what about, and what about for consultants we hire? Or, um, who do like attorney, um, Broth who came in and did his investigation? Where, where does he come out of?
Yeah, like I don't necessarily know. It would be whatever department was using attorney Broth or some other attorney. Uh, it would either be their budget or, uh, some appropriation from contingency or elsewhere uh, to pay those expenses, but that would not be in my budget either.
Okay. And then, um, one last quick question. How the are there other legal services? I mean, I, I'll just speak candidly, I was certainly somebody who the city viewed as having a big impact on the legal costs and raising, you know, the budget a hundred grand. How, where does that get logged?
I would say that's, that's a complete exaggeration. We got an additional appropriation to provide for some overtime uh, in order to respond to some of the right-to-know requests that you generated. Others as well, but you were, yours were included. Uh, but that was much, much less than a hundred thousand dollars in the legal department.
Okay, I think I'm going off an article that, um, possibly the mayor had given a quote to the paper that it had run up. I had run up the cost about a hundred grand. And I'm only going off of that because that was a number thrown out. Now, I don't care, I think, I recall at some point fifty thousand was added, but does that does that get, is that in your budget? Or is that in somebody else's?
There was no fifty thousand dollars added to the legal department's budget.
Okay, so it's just, uh, overtime that I would see in the budget that would account for whatever right-to-know requests were taken up.
In the twenty twenty year, and this, this doesn't even talk about the projected budgets for twenty twenty-one, but last year, in the fiscal year that we're currently in, there was an addition made, uh, of ten thousand dollars uh, to pay for some overtime. Uh, and that was mainly occasioned by, uh, the increased of right-to-know requests that were raised.
Okay. Thank you. Not to misrepresent, I was just going off of what had been in the paper, but thank you.
All right, welcome. All right, the people that are on call-ins on their phones, please put them on mute. We're hearing paper shuffling in the background. And, and if, until you have, want to ask a question, please keep your phone on mute. I can see several that are not on mute. And if we get a lot of background noise, we'll have to cut that person off. Right. But now we're at the city clerk's office. Um, are there any questions relative to the city clerk's budget for FY twenty twenty-one? Hearing and seeing none. Energy management. Any questions on the energy management portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none. Civic and community activities. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move on to the Hunt Building. Any questions relative to the Hunt Building? Seeing none, going on to parking enforcement. Any questions or comments on the parking enforcement budget? Hearing and seeing none, parking operations. Any questions or comments on parking operations as part of the budget? Hearing and seeing none, we move on to economic development. Are there any questions relative to economic development budget? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to move on to administrative services division. And the administrative services portion of that department, uh, division. Any questions on administrative services? Seeing and hearing none.
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Hang on, I'm turning on my video. Okay, um, just, um, so when you read a title, just so I know, I thought you were going to go through each one. When there's a big subtitle that's all lumped together and all of those topics can be addressed, is that correct?
No, I go through every single department within those major titles. So administrative services division is the, is the division. Then I go through each one of the departments. So if you have a question on a particular department, uh, you should bring it up when I read that department. If you have a general question on administrative services in general, you can ask it now.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a comment on this one. And then I have one down in assessing, I'll wait for, okay, I understand. Okay, um, I'm just going to say that, um, from a position standpoint, I am a big believer that the position that was needed in the city was a chief of assessing. And that I find this to be a non-essential position that got added to the budget that we're paying a lot for when what we really needed was a chief. And that's all I'm going to say to that. I object to this position and department being funded, um, in the way it was done last year. Um, and I think it put an awful lot of expense on the back of the taxpayer when what we needed was something else. So that's all I'm going to say.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, next is the Arlington Street Community Center. Any questions on the Arlington Street Community Center? Seeing and hearing none?
Yes, yes, it's Beth Scare.
Okay.
Um, how much are we budgeting for that?
Director Kleiner? Director Kleiner? Uh, you're on mute.
Excuse me, sir. Uh, the fiscal twenty twenty one budget has a total of eighty two thousand nine hundred and thirty nine dollars.
And, and what does that go towards? Is that like buildings? Salaries?
It is the, consists of the salary for the director who runs the center, the associated benefit costs, small telephone cost to the building and office supplies. It does not include building. The building supplies are in the city building budget.
Okay, thank you.
All set? Thank you. Any other questions on the Arlington Street? Seeing and hearing none, human resources? Any questions on the human resource portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none? Benefits? Any questions on the benefits? Section of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, telecommunications? Any questions on telecommunications portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, information technology, IT department? Any questions on the IT budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just a quick question. I had spoken to the board about um working and putting more information uh out digitally. And um I was pushed off on that once ago, but was told it was something you were going to look into. And, and I want to know if anything has been put into the budget to look at uh digitally scanning records and reducing the amount of people we have in going to uploaded records that the public has access to.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
So Director Carnegon and I, in fact, did meet with a firm today. Um, we are gathering quotes for that very project. Um, I'm not going to say at this time that it would result in any reduction of personnel. I would think that is too it's not wise to say that at this point. We need to explore that more, but we are gathering quotes uh, for digital records.
Okay.
Um, just to follow up quickly. Um you know, I was a proponent for allowing um citizens or members of the community to be involved with this, and that was shut down. And I want to voice my objection to that. I think that citizens should be a part of sharing information about what we're looking for for digital records. And I think the city operates in a closed capacity and continues to look for ways to shut people out. I'm disappointed in that. It's nice to hear that they looked at it today. But I've been waiting, what, three or four months? So terrific, but I don't know if they really know what I'm looking for, Rick. And I have a funny feeling that assessing office doesn't. Thank you.
All right. Okay, the next is anybody else on IT? Seeing and hearing no one, risk management? Any questions or comments on risk management? Seeing and hearing none, city buildings?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
It's a question I asked at your budget or emailed over to you at one of the budget meetings, and I didn't get an answer. But if we're looking at selling one forty one Burke Street, and um it seems to be something that's happening, are we still carrying that building with the costs in the twenty twenty one budget? And is that typically what we would do?
Um, that question is better reserved for uh, when we get into community development or DPW. It's not a building, the building thing we're talking about here is maintenance of buildings.
Well, that building was moved into that budget and accounted for on maintenance for twenty twenty one. And I don't think it's DPW because it was moved out of the DPW budget. And we're paying for it for the whole year. So my question is, do we budget all the money typically to pay an entire year on a building that we look like we're going to sell this year?
Um, who would like to address that question? Director Kleiner or Director Cummings?
So Alderman Dowd, um, that that building was moved to the city buildings portion of the budget um, for us to cover the utilities and the upkeep costs um, until the building is sold. So it is common that it would stay in the budget until the building is taken off of the city board.
Okay.
Thank you.
All set? Thank you. All right. Purchasing, any questions or comments relative to the purchasing budget? Seeing and hearing none, assessing?
Yep. Lori Ordolano, forty one Berkeley Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um this is an area that I obviously have looked at closely. And I believe that there are positions in here that unlike what the mayor said, that everyone's working seventy hours a week. That's not the case in this department. And I would challenge anyone who says it's also being handled at forty hours a week. So number one, I don't understand why we didn't reduce hours or furlough in this department. Um, number two, when hired Vision appraisal and I went to the March second meeting uh, with the DRA and Vision, they explained that by April first, after the annual inventory date, that uh, Vision would be taking over the MLS sales verification, the sales data, and also capturing permits. A major part of our assessor's job description is sales verification and permit capture. And when I heard this, I have wondered what are our assessors going to do because their job descriptions involve a good bit of this work? And why were we turning all of this over to Vision and then keeping our staff at the level we were? Frankly, I honestly thought that the city was making a move to outsource the department and phase out the assessors, but they're not actually phasing them out. And I thought that because when you assign the work, like they say they're assigning to an outside contractor that we're paying one point three million, then I wonder why we're paying all these assessor salaries and um and not having, their job descriptions don't match what they're doing any longer. And I think the job description should match. And it's not something that I say to put a smile on your face, Ms. Kleiner. I really say it because I don't understand it. And I, I have wondered, and nobody will answer this kind of question.
Director Kleiner?
Yes, so I'll start with the first. Um, the staff within the assessing department, they are all working forty, forty plus hours since we closed City Hall building um, March fifteenth. So that just so that the public knows, they are working. We hold staff meetings virtually. They have worked extremely hard to pick up building permit in- information, to um loo- look at new construction, to process exemptions and credits, and to get everything ready for the July tax bills. That staff has continued to work very hard remotely. So um, I will start with that. The other, um, going into the full measure and list revaluation, it is very common when any municipality enters into a full measure and list, you would not lay off your staff. City assessors will continue to work hard. They will evaluate property. They will inspect property. Um, and they will work with the staff from Vision day in and day out. Um, and they continue to do that now. So it is not when you enter into a full measure and list common to lay off of all of your city staff. Even though, yes, Ms. Ordolano is correct, as the contract with Vision states, vision is required to inspect building permits as after April first.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Dowd?
Yes?
Just one quick follow-up. Um, you know, I, I, I do take exception to the um, you know, how hard they work with exemptions and credits. That's a position that is assigned to one of the clerical members who primarily handles that, and this is a busy season because this is the exemption credit season. But I read the last um director's report that was given at the board of assessors meeting. And it talked about how the assessors or the assessing staff had been very busy. They had ninety emails that month and in responded to around a hundred and seventy calls. I mean, I do the math. Ninety emails among eight people for a month is an email every other day. I don't consider that a heavy load.
Okay, you have less, less than one minute.
The phone calls, I also, a hundred and seventy among eight people. I don't consider that a heavy load. And I'm just going to tell you, I find some of this discussion simply not credible, and that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on assessing? Seeing and hearing none, GIS? Any questions or comments on the GIS portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to the financial services division. Financial services, any questions or comments on the financial services portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, we will go to the police department. Any questions or comments on the police department budget? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move on to the fire department. Any questions or comments on the fire department budget? Hearing none, we'll go on to emergency management. Emergency preparedness division, emergency management department. Any questions or comments on that budget? Seeing seeing and hearing done, go to citywide communications. Any comments or questions on the citywide communications? Seeing and hearing none of the public safety hydrant fees, fire protection. Any questions on that portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, street lighting. Any questions or comments on the street lighting portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, community and the public health and community services division, community services. Any questions or comments on the community services budget? Hearing and seeing none, community health. Any questions or comments on the community health budget? Seeing and hearing none, environmental health. Any questions and concerns on the environmental health portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, welfare administration. Any questions or comments on the welfare administration portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, welfare assistance portion of the FY twenty one budget. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none? Public works division, public works administration and engineering. Any questions or concerns about that portion of the budget?
Yep, um just a quick question, and I don't know if it's in this line item or not. Um the work that's being done, which will, I think, continue into this twenty twenty one budget for the building of the new facility, is that part of administration and engineering? Am I in the right line item area?
Rick the photo, do you want to answer that question?
Uh, no, that would not be in administration and engineering.
Okay, where would that?
In fact, in fact, you would not find that anywhere in, in our operating budget.
Is it somewhere?
That would be, that would be separate. Uh, that would be uh a bond to eventually be sold, which has not been at this point.
Okay, so yep, um, the bond hasn't been sold yet. It's appropriated. You're working on it, but then it just doesn't get carried anymore. Is that correct? It's not carried anymore at this point?
Uh, you know, I'd let uh, I think John Griffin speak to that. He's more of an expert on bonding than I am. I just, it's not in our operating budget.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, the question can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
The question was, is any part of the construction the um, DPW building included in the operating budget? The answer is no. What we do is when, when projects are approved, we set up a project fund. So all the costs associated with the project fund would be captured in the um, in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All set? Okay, any other questions on the public works administration and engineering portion of the public works division? Seeing, hearing none, street department? Any questions and concerns on the street department portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, parks and recreation. Any questions? Concerns or comments on park recreation? Seeing and hearing none, we go to public services division, Pinewood Cemetery? Any questions or concerns on Pinewood Cemetery? Seeing and hearing none, woodland cemetery. Any questions, concerns on woodland cemetery? Moving along, Edgewood and suburban cemeteries. Any questions or concerns on Edgewood? Suburban cemeteries? Seeing and hearing none, public library. Any questions or comments on the public library budget? Seeing and hearing none? Building inspection out of the community development division? Any questions or concerns on the building inspection portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, code enforcement? Any questions or concerns on code enforcement? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go to waterway, Waterways Hydroelectric Operations. Any questions on that portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, community development. Any questions and concerns on community development portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, planning and zoning. Any questions on planning and zoning portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, urban programs? Any questions or concerns on urban programs portion of the budget?
Yes, this is Beth Scare. Um, what, what is that? What is, what are those programs? And how much is the budget?
Director Photo? Oh, no, that's not Director Photo. Community development, is that Director Marshan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, happy to answer the question. Urban programs is a one hundred percent federally funded department. There are no city dollars that go into this division. It includes funding from HUD in large part. It includes um, the CDBG allocation, uh, competi- a nationally competitive led grants and home funding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, moving on, uh, transportation. Any questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns regarding Transportation portion of the budget? Hearing and seeing none, Education, School Department. Any questions or concerns relative to the School Department budget? Seeing and hearing none, go to Debt Service Contingency and Interfund Transfers. Debt Service portion of the budget. Any questions or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move to Contingency. Any questions or concerns regarding contingency? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to Interfund Transfers. Any questions or concerns on Interfund Transfers? Seeing and hearing nuns, we'll go to Capital Improvements, Capital Equipment. Any questions or concerns on Capital Equipment? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go to the Enterprise Funds Revenue and Appropriations. First is a Solid Waste Fund Estimated Revenues. Any questions on Solid Waste Fund Estimated Revenues? Seeing and hearing none, Solid Waste Fund Appropriations. Any questions or concern on that portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go to Wastewater. Wastewater Fund Estimated Revenues. Any question on Wastewater Fund Estimated Revenues? Whoever that is, please go on mute. And on Wastewater, Wastewater Fund Appropriations. Any questions or concerns on Wastewater Appropriations? Somebody's phone is on, you need to go on mute. Special Revenue Funds, Revenue and Appropriations. City Special Revenue Funds. That's the Public Health Client Fees Fund. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the budget? Special Revenue Funds, by the way, are funds that are earmarked particularly for a certain item. Monies are put into it and expended out of it by legislation. I don't know who, it's call in number five. Whoever you are, please go on mute. Law Enforcement Training Fund. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, Parks and Recreation Program Funds. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, Home and Stadium Events Fund. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the budget? Hang Access Channels Fund. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none. The Hunt Building Facility Rental Fund. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the budget? Seeing none, Fire Training Facility Rental Fund. Any questions or concern on that special revenue fund? Seeing and hearing none, Special Road and Highway Fund. Any questions or concern on that portion of the budget? Annachuck Acquisition Bond Fund. Any questions or concerns on that special revenue account? 201 Main Street Rental Fund. Any questions or concerns relative to that special revenue fund? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to the School Special Revenue Funds. First is Food Services. Any questions or concern on Food Services Special Revenue Fund? Seeing and hearing no, None Summer Feeding Program. Any questions or concerns on the Summer Feeding Program? Seeing, hearing none, Driver's Education. Any questions on the Driver's Education Special Revenue Fund? Next is the Summer School. Any questions on the Summer School Special Revenue Fund? Seeing and hearing none, the next is the Adult Continuing Education Special Revenue Fund. Any questions or concerns on that portion of the special revenue? Seeing and hearing none, Athletic Revenue Fund. Any questions or concerns on that special revenue fund? Seeing and hearing none, School Facilities Rental. Any questions or concerns on that special revenue fund? Seeing, hearing none, After School Program. Any questions or concern on the After School Program Special Revenue Fund? Seeing and hearing no one, North Student Shop Special Revenue Fund. Any questions on that school special revenue? And then the South Student Shop. Any questions or concerns on that special revenue fund? Seeing none, culinary arts. That's special revenue fund. Any questions or concerns? Daycare, any questions or concerns on the daycare special revenue fund? Seeing and hearing none, Special Education Local Tuition. That's special revenue fund. Seeing and hearing none, School CTE Tuition Fund. Any questions or concerns on that special revenue fund? Seeing and hearing none. Next is the National Supplemental Information on the Budget, the National Airport Authority. Any questions or concerns on the National Airport Authority? Seeing and hearing none, Capital Equipment Reserve, SURF Plan Replacements. Is there any question or concerns on the SURF portion of the budget? Seeing and hearing none, Expendable Trust and Reserve Funds Funded by Appropriations. Are there any questions on that account? And the last is the Expendable Trust Funds Funded by Contributions. Any questions on that? Seeing none. I will now ask if there are any other budget related questions that anyone has that they would like to ask at this time. Seeing and hearing none. Alderman O'Brien, you ready for a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to stand to make a motion to Table I-20-023. I roll call.
Please clerk call a rule.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Get yourselves off mute if you're on mute.
I'll come back to them, Alderman Dowd. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Woolshire.
Yes.
And then I'll call for Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Karen.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, I can hear you now, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is Alderman Clemmons on? Oh, you have 12 As, zero As.
Thank you, so the R-20023 is retabled. Until the, the next meeting we will have will be the first wrap up on June 2. And Alderman O'Brien, another motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that the May 20th, 2020, special meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned by roll call.
Please call a rule.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lawrence. Alderman Lopez, I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez.
Yes, and great job, Alderman Dowd.
Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Woolshire.
Yes.
You have 11 As and zero As.
Alderwoman Kelly is back on.
Can you hear me?
I can now, Alderwoman Kelly.
It's been so frustrating. I'm here, I've been here the whole time, and I am in favor of adjourning, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you have 12 As and zero As.
All right. We're going to adjourn, and then I said the first wrap up is June 2. And I'll be putting out information prior to that meeting. So I hope everyone has a good evening. And I think it went fairly well for first time for having a virtual public hearing on a budget this size. So we are now adjourned at 8:42 PM. Thank you, everyone.